Item number three on our agenda is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance 3312 rezoning of 6.16 acres of property in southwest quarter of section four.
3321.
3321, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
Yeah, this is a request to rezone the property. It's over at Walnut and Mockingbird. I'm not sure if it's up on the screen, but it's right across the west of the intersection of Walnut and Mockingbird.
Where the deer run around all the time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. The request is, the current zoning is R2. They're looking to rezone it to A1, which is general agricultural. The Guthrie Greenhouses, which is adjacent to the west, is the property owner, and they're looking to do some additional greenhouses, and that's the reason they're looking to rezone it, because in R2, ag use is, or a greenhouse is not an allowed use. The comprehensive plan does designate the property as ag open space. Large reason for that, from what I could tell, was it is in the floodplain, so it was probably looked at as to have an ag open space, but from a comp plan perspective, the proposed land use would fit in with the proposed comp planned land use designation. The only thing, other thing I was going to add is, in the area, you had in your packet, I believe, a zoning map. There is some agricultural up to the north part of the city there. In and around that area, it is owned R1. To the adjacent to the north is R1. To the east is across Walnut, that's all R1. And then there's the R2 to the south, but there is some additional ag besides the greenhouses up to the north of that by the high school in that. As was provided in your packet, there were a number of protest letters that were provided to you. In fact, there were 49 property owner letters that were provided. On Monday, there was an additional 13 that were provided to staff, which I had given you as a handout. Of those, two of them actually were duplicates, so in total, you're looking at about 61 total, or 60 total, letters of protest. The map I gave you indicates the property owners. I thought it would be a little bit visual, or better visual for the council to see specifically where these property owners are. The only other, the last thing to add on that is, there is a provision in our code that if there's a certain amount of written protest, it would require a three-fifths vote. In this case, even though some of the letters were submitted late, it requires three days prior, so the deadline wasn't met. So at this point, only 12 of those count towards that, which doesn't meet the threshold, so a simple majority would be all that's needed for an approval. And with that, I'll leave it to the council if you have any questions. Otherwise, I know there are people here that would like to speak.
Dan, what is the threshold?
Yeah, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna ask.
Oh, it's, there's two provisions. It's land area, but the one that usually qualifies is at least 50% of the property owners within the 300-foot notice area. So if we have at least 50% of those people that have written protest, it would then require a three-fifths vote, which would be a five to two versus a four to three. In this case, like I said, only 12 would qualify for that. There was a total of 41 property owners within that, so you would need at least 22 in order to get the threshold to the three-fifths.
Thank you.
And the planning commission voted?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilman Taylor. The planning commission's recommendation was a recommendation of denial by a two-to-one vote.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, we have a number of people that want to speak on this issue. Trailer Pitts. Mr. Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Please identify yourself, your name, and your address, please.
My name is Trailer Pitts. I live at 1109 Pin Oak Drive. It's approximately one and a half blocks east of the property in question. I am opposed to rezoning this area. I'm primarily concerned that by rezoning this to a commercial area, it is going to lower property values for us. I understand that you guys purchased the property in 95, but the majority of the houses that were built there were built in the mid-'70s. So they were there prior to you guys purchasing the business. I'm concerned that by adding a bunch of greenhouses right there, it is going to be a visual eyesore, along with increasing traffic and, well, frankly, the smell of growing medicinal marijuana or hemp in the area.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Andrea Bennett?
I live at 1103 North Walnut. I am directly to the north of the property boundary. And they actually purchased, I guess, the greenhouse in 95, I guess, but the land that was right next to my house was not purchased until the 2011 timeframe from the people that owned the children's home. So they sold that parcel of land and sat vacant for years and years and years. My son mowed it. The guy that stays behind me would mow it. We'd keep it up. My fence is the one that borders it and comes around the front. They tore down the front of my fence, but that's a whole nother conversation. So they took possession of that land in 2011. I am here today because I oppose them zoning it, rezoning it, and that is primarily based on the property values will decline. When I purchased my home, I did not think that I would be living next door to a greenhouse. I just didn't think that. Or I wouldn't have bought my home there. So I really would like for you guys to consider the impact it will have to the neighborhood. I'm not opposed to anyone trying to do better and increase the scope of your business, but there are other areas you can farm or grow or whatever you would like to do in that space for that type of purpose. The land that's north of our addition or our neighborhood is primarily not as populated as the area that we currently live in. So there's a difference. There's not, like, they have agriculture right down the street. It's still a totally different area. That's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Olks?
No, I don't, not wish to speak.
Okay. Ryan Cotting?
My name is Ryan Cotting. I live at 1121 North Walnut. Everything's basically already been said. First and foremost, we all know if greenhouses are allowed to be built in that area, the detriment that it's going to have to property values for not only myself, but everybody in that neighborhood. When we purchased our home in 2003, one of the reasons we purchased that home was because of the neighborhood, the kids, the families. It was a family area, close to the schools. It wasn't in the middle of a agricultural or commercial area. When their land was purchased from the Burgess Trust or family in 2011, they purchased it knowing that that property was zoned residential, just as I did when I purchased my house, knew that it was residential. So I cautioned the council that allowing rezoning of this property is setting a precedent that I don't know there's a road you want to go down. Many of you know, my family, we show livestock all around the country. I would love to rezone my house and keep a show calf or two there when they're sick or need to do a little work. Be kind of nice. But it's just not the area. I would never ask to do something like that. It's a residential area. It's a family area. You hear a lot of people talking about the marijuana, and that's not the issue. It's not the issue. The issue with it is, though, this is an all-or-nothing item. If you allow this to be rezoned to agriculture, you can't limit what they can or cannot do as long as it fits within that agriculture zoning. This does not fit in this area. It doesn't fit in this neighborhood. This neighborhood has been one of the crown jewels from Guthrie for years and years and years, and I would hope that the council would maybe look at it from our view. Would you want, in your neighborhoods, many of you, some of you even live in this neighborhood, would you want the greenhouses to be built within a few hundred feet or 100 yards of your house? I think you would agree with us that it's probably not the image that we want. It's nothing personal against Guthrie Greenhouses. I own a business. I support their business. I hope their business grows to be the largest greenhouse in the state of Oklahoma, but they own other property in other places where they can grow their business, just as I have mine outside of the residential area. I've also had people talking to us about sales tax, and I would bring forward, they're a wholesale company. They told us that in the meeting. Wholesale is not generating tax dollars to the city of Guthrie. Those tax dollars are being collected within the communities and the cities where they are being retail sold to the end user. And that's all that I would like to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotting. I know that we, at some points in time, we didn't have enough of the public announcement application to fill out, and I guess at this point, I will ask if there was anybody that didn't have a chance that wants to speak against this rezoning, just to make sure that I give everybody opportunity before we hear. Did you have a chance to fill one out?
Not.
I will, I will allow it, because we did have, we ran out of copies for a while. So if you would, please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name's Teresa Lamb, and I live at 1111 Magnolia Court. My property is the property that backs up to the property that's going to be rezoned. It actually, the dumpsters are right behind my fence. So we are affected by everything that goes on in that property, when the trash gets emptied, when they take down trees, when they do controlled burns. It all directly affects our situation and our quality of life. We bought our house in 2015. I have two boys. One graduated in 2015, the other's a senior this year. We bought it because it was a great neighborhood. It was close to the schools. It was going to be great to hold on to and resell in the future. It was going to grow. And since then, you know, I know there's been problems selling houses in the neighborhood. Before we bought it, it had been on the market for 13 months. Joan Robinette couldn't get it sold because, mostly because of the dumpsters. And, you know, since they've taken over, they've taken out trees, we've seen a decrease in the deer, and, you know, I'm just, I'm really concerned about our quality of life and, you know, the neighborhood feel if it gets turned into greenhouses versus an open space. You know, the cross-country team runs through there, the kids walking back and forth through school. If it's turned into greenhouses, you know, I'm just concerned about how that's going to affect the overall view of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamb. Okay, now, the applicants, Mr. Jones, are you going to be speaking for all of the two owners also, or?
Yes, sir.
All three of you have signed. I just wanted to know if you're speaking for all.
Initially, and then I think they may have.
Okay, please identify yourself and address.
My name is Ryan Jones. I actually live in Logan County, north side of Edmond. My business is in Edmond, but I represent Guthrie Greenhouses on their application to rezone. And I just wanted to start out by saying, you know, what we have here is a property that's zoned residential and cannot be used for residential purposes. So as the zoning code goes, primary purpose being appropriate productive use of land, that's the ultimate thing we're trying to avoid, is having a piece of land that can't be used for anything. A lot of the comments at the commission level and just now centered around this parcel as kind of the neighborhood field, I think was the term used, which is completely understandable. If it's been that way for a long period of time, people get used to it. I would want to live next to a greenbelt. I would want to live next to a field. There's no fault in that. I just think that the question is not whether or not that's beneficial to the surrounding parcel owners. The question is more, can we force a landowner by denying a zoning, a rezoning request into a zoning classification that allows no beneficial use whatsoever? The staff report is pretty clear that the comprehensive plan has always seen that swath of land between the creek and Walnut as ag open space. The future expected uses showed residential use to the north and to the south, so the element of mixed use that that creates is not something we're introducing with this rezoning. It's something that was foreseen and expected from the, in the comprehensive plan from the beginning. And then regarding the marijuana issue, I appreciated the staff report pointing out we can't contract zone, we can't try to, you know, regulate specific uses at the zoning level or stipulate that what we will and won't do. But I did want to clarify that, you know, the tenor of the conversation that the commission became about marijuana or no marijuana, and that's not even really the planned use of this facility. It would be a normal plant nursery, just like the existing facility adjacent to it. My clients have stated that as a business consideration, it would generate too much risk and liability. They don't live or operate near that parcel, so they don't plan to grow marijuana there. Aside from that, I think it would be just an inappropriate forum to regulate that issue when the issue is really land use, and we'd have an essentially worthless piece of land if it's not rezoned.
Can I ask a question real quick? In the interest of the people that are sitting here, you're saying that it's not their intended use. Are they gonna grow marijuana there or not? Period.
I'll let, I'll let one of you speak to that.
I think that's going to help the citizens to understand this a little bit better.
Well, you can just sit right, you can just say it right there.
At the microphone, please. At the microphone. And identify yourself.
My name is Terrence Hischhauser, and I live at 2000 North Sooner Road in Guthrie. And I'm the owner of the Guthrie Greenhouses property, both in town and out of town. And for this parts of land, absolutely not, we will not be growing medical marijuana in town. That is not our planned use for it. It's not in the future use for it. We're not interested in doing that. But it's, but I can say it, it's also irrelevant because we could, we're, our agriculture parcel inside of town that we're operating our nursery business right now, we could be growing medical marijuana there. We're not.
Right.
We're not bringing it into town. We don't want to have it in town. We know it smells, like he said, we don't live on that land right there, and it would be a risk factor.
Well, it's very close to the high school, too, so it's, there's a lot of concerns there. I can, I can see what they're concerned about.
And I'm talking about the parcel in town. And also, actually, for medical marijuana, growing it, there is, you can, it's, there is no law for schools. It's only for dispensaries. But I'm talking about the parcel inside of town. We are not planning on growing marijuana there for what we're asking for rezoning. That's, that's my answer on that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Very brief, just one final comment.
So I got a quick question, though. So you say, you know, the land zoned residential, we talk about the comprehensive plan that shows it as ag because it's flood property, probably is why it shows it is a potential ag scenario. The bottom line is it's residential. Y'all bought it knowing it's residential. Okay, so the argument of, you know, it's going against the comprehensive plan is inaccurate because it was bought residential. That's all I had to say.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, and I do think that it was, the comprehensive plan, we diverged from it a bit when the surrounding area was rezoned to develop to the north and to the south, probably without factoring into the equation, hey, we just zoned, zoned off this parcel that's a floodplain residential, and now it's worthless. And there's been a lot of talk about property values, which is highly relevant in our discussion. All the talk, though, has been about the other property values. And as Planning Commissioner Bryant stated, I think, at the hearing, there's really no evidence that mixed-use communities end up having, in the long run, lower property values than purely residential communities. If there's any data to back up any substantial decrease in home values, we haven't seen it. If there is a decrease, it's probably somewhat marginal. On the other hand, if the only use of this parcel is residential and it can't be used as such, the value plummets, and any potential buyer would look at it and say, you have a residential property that can't be used for what it's zoned for, and you've already tried to get it changed and failed. So, I mean, it's, it's worthless to us at that point.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Jones before he sits down?
What was your intention when you bought the residential property? Was it, was it part of a single parcel that went all the way across?
Access, we have, yeah, from one block to the other.
Okay, so it was all, you bought it all as one chunk?
Why don't we, I understood.
Greenhouses, then, the.
It was all, all one parcel?
Just a minute, I understand you, you were gonna speak, so go ahead.
Jesse Tischhauser.
Jesse.
I'm one of the owners of Guthrie Greenhouses, while I live at 2000 North Sooner Road. We bought the greenhouses in 1995. It's about a 35-acre, or 25-acre tract of land that is on Broad Street and over on Wentz Boulevard, or Wentz Street. And in 2011, we purchased that property that's basically all floodplain from the children's home, because they had no use for it, because it's all floodplain, and we use it for access between.
Because they couldn't use it.
Because they couldn't use it, right. We all saw how their property turned out when they, when they rezoned from residential to multifamily residential. But yeah, that, that was our intention, so we could just access our property from the, from the east.
Okay.
Right, and since then, our business has grown from about, when we purchased it in 95, we had about four or five acres of greenhouses, and now we have over 13 acres of greenhouses. So we filled that space up completely, and our business is thriving. We're the oldest and largest greenhouse in the state, actually probably the only greenhouse left in the state, and we're trying to expand it without having to go farther away to bring our plants back into town to ship them.
If we will, we allowed you to make this expansion, what kind of job growth does that mean for Guthrie?
Uh, that's a good question. Probably not a lot.
Okay. When you talked about expansion, and I think at the planning, Planning Commission, there was comments that you are talking about bringing some of your, some of your growing greenhouses closer so that you would be able to then be more efficient. Is it, is that what the plan is? Is it, is it just moving from, you have greenhouses, I guess, north of?
Correct, which is north of the high school now. Yes, we have 40 acres of land just north of the high school.
And so you would be bringing them so that you have a more efficient operation because they would be close, you wouldn't have to be moving them the two miles or whatever it is? Is that, is that the main driving force here?
That's exactly right. We're actually building more greenhouses up by, out of, out of city limits as well, because we've expanded. Our largest customer is the Atwoods family out of Enid, and they have, they went from 45 stores to 65 stores over the last five years. So we're trying to keep up with that demand so that we can grow enough tomatoes and peppers to not lose that customer.
Okay.
Right, we used to, we used to do a lot of this stuff up in the 40 acres there, and we've got three or four trucks that would bring plants all spring long, past the high school, past the cross-country team running, all that stuff slowing down the school traffic, and have to bring them into our main location there off of Walnut Street to ship everything.
Okay, all right. One of the other concerns that I heard was the increased traffic along that access road from the east. You want to talk about that?
Yeah.
No, Mr. Jones, you had your chance. No, I'm kidding.
You had your five minutes. Already know your address.
It's easy, I think, to move past the zoning classification, classification decision into the actual use and say, you know, the use is going to cause X amount of traffic. We're moving from a higher-density classification, R2, to a lower-density classification, ag. And so I don't know that it would make a whole lot of sense to deny a rezoning for less density based on traffic and density concerns. And if you all have anything to add to that.
And it, and it won't, and it will not increase traffic at all. Traffic is going to stay exactly the same for that piece of property. The same trucks that come in, or our employees that come in, is going to be the same thing. We're going to have a little bit more, actually, it should reduce us on the road with our little trucks and our trailers of plants going up and down the street. We won't be hauling stuff back and forth to our shipping department because everything, all the bedding plant business that we do for spring and fall will be grown right there on that acreage. So if anything, it would reduce traffic, is what it would do.
So you wouldn't be shipping more from that site?
From the, from where we're asking about rezoning?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, within the property, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Well, it seems to me that if you're growing more vegetables, let's just say, there, and you are shipping them out to Atwoods or wherever.
Well, we're not going to be bringing down from the property outside of town, we're not going to be bringing that same kind of product into, we're, we're trying to keep that business a little, the same or a little bit more, but no, it won't change traffic as in our delivery trucks or anything. So what we're doing is taking the greenhouses we were using outside of town, we're changing the use for those, and condensing all of our bedding plants to the in-town area. So we won't be traveling back and forth with those plants in that business, that, that area will all stay right there in town. Understand?
Not really. So if you ship, if you're sending bedding plants to TLC.
Right.
And that, a greenhouse that wasn't there now, but it, but might be if you get the zoning application approved, how, how, how wouldn't that increase more trucks going in and out if you're?
Our, our shipping department is in that block of land between Wentz Street and Walnut. We used to grow, we have three acres of greenhouse up off of Cooksey Road, and we're going to hopefully be able to fit two acres of greenhouse in this little six-acre tract of property. So we will actually be growing less plants than we were before because we don't have as much space. And all the plants were always brought to that location to be shipped out to Texas, Arkansas, Oklahoma, all over the Midwest. So we'll be doing more stuff in that location, but we'll be bringing less stuff in. We'll just be shipping it all the same as we were before out.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Correct. You're just not shipping in anymore. You're shipping out. That's all you're doing.
So it'll be there rather than up the street. We won't have to bring it here to ship it out. We'll have it right here. It'll go down our driveway to our shipping department and then go out.
Cool.
Okay. Other questions by the council?
I have a comment if I could.
Yes. Leroy?
Of course, you could probably tell by my gray hair, I've been doing this for a number of years, since 1979, and rezoning can be a very emotional issue, and I just want to commend both parties tonight. It's been done in a very polite, and everybody has been concise and articulate in their views, and there's not been any derogatory statements and that nature, and, and that just makes me feel good about the community that you can have this type of discussion, because I've been to a lot of zoning meetings where they get unruly and can be quite negative. And anyway, I just want to commend both sides for sticking to their facts and, and being polite and concise and articulate in their comments tonight.
Okay, right, very good, very good. Yes, sir. Second thoughts?
Second thoughts?
No, I, I just have one, I didn't notice it or didn't pay attention.
Identify yourself again if you would.
Ryan Cotting, 1121 North Walnut. I didn't pay attention, didn't notice it when I was speaking earlier, but one of the councilmen that represents this ward is not up here. Is he missing or waiting on dawn?
He has recused himself.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this august body. I didn't get one of those, Colonel, so I'm sorry. Al Ingram at 1105 Pin Oak Drive. All respect to y'all's intent, but I was a realtor for 33 years, and when somebody came to me and says, I want to buy that six acres over there, I would say, what are you going to do with it? Well, I'm going to make a business out of it. I would make it contingent, the purchase of that property, contingent on the zoning change. This would never happen if that were done. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And, and again, thank you for everybody's comments. These are challenging issues, challenging issues, and, and, you know, the unfortunate thing in, in some of the decisions that this council and many of our boards and commissions have to make is that not everybody goes away happy. And the best that we can do is try to make sure we have given everybody opportunity to express their, their concerns, their position, and, and I think that's been allowed today, and you've done, as Leroy has, the city manager has identified, I think, done that with logic and not emotion, and, and that's appreciated. I, I think we all want to be partners, and congratulations on the expansion of your, of your business and the success of your business. We also want to be good neighbors, and, and that goes to the whole neighborhood. And I, I think that, I speak for everybody in this room, whether you're the business involved or the residents involved. I'd like to make one comment. Yes, sir.
When you originally bought the land, though, it was bought for access, right? It wasn't bought for this business, it was bought for access.
For access for this business.
But it wasn't.
Right, but not to expand.
Not to expand it, it was built for access to the business.
At that point, we didn't have the financial means to do anything more.
So the thought process was it was bought for access?
The thought process was someday if we need that land to build, I, hopefully we can do that.
Okay.
It takes, we grew over the years, we didn't grow in one year. It took us. We grew over the years. We didn't grow in one year. It took us the last 22 years to grow.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about when you first bought it, though.
Yeah. Yeah, we're thinking someday, hopefully, we can build greenhouses over there and grow some more plants. Yeah, we were. We were going to deal with, or possibly our residents or our employees who did it in our property. I mean, yeah, we want to use the property.
But you couldn't do that because it's a floodplain.
Could I just interrupt you for a second?
Well.
If this is going to go on, we need to get her next to the mic, so.
That would be nice.
If you'd get up to the mic, please.
I'm just trying to make a point.
Right.
That when you bought the property, you bought it for access. You didn't buy it for future expansion because if you did, you would have made it contingent upon being able to rezon the property to be able to do something with it.
Actually, we, we bought the property originally, her father lives across the, right behind the children's home. So, he has, I think, nine of the 15 acres that we purchased over there. So, he has a residence over there. And then we, then he, a quick claim deeded.
Quick claim deeded.
This part that he didn't need to the greenhouse so that we could have access through that back way. So, in 2011, yeah, our revenue was probably a third of, or two-thirds of what it is now. So, we wouldn't have been able to expand much less. We could barely build the road to get in and out of there, much less expand at that point.
Right, okay.
Okay, any, any other questions of the council?
I do have a comment. I, the last thing that I want to do is hamper your business. And I think everybody up here feels exactly like I do. The last thing we want to do is, is cause a problem with business and that we're trying to bring business to Guthrie, not get rid of it. And whether, whether there's employees or not that are added to, your, your added income, your, your success is great for Guthrie, and I'm, I'm happy for you. But at the same time, we've got to, we, we've got to look at all these individuals out here that live around there and, and look at, it, like the mayor said, it's a really tough decision you were in right here because I don't want to. The last thing that I want to do is hamper anybody's business in Guthrie in any way. But at the same time, I still have to look at all these individuals that live next to that and try to figure out what we can do. So, maybe there's a solution somewhere in between that we can do besides zoning this.
Is there? Have we looked at everything?
I don't know. Have we looked at special use? Excuse me? This is the beginning?
I don't believe special use allows greenhouses. You could grow outdoor without any buildings, but that doesn't really do us as much good as being able to cover things up in January and February.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. Anybody else? You okay? Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt ordinance number 3321, which is the rezoning of the 6.16 acres from R1, or I'm sorry, R2 to A1.
So, let's be clear. A, yes vote is to adopt, and a no vote is to deny.
Correct.
I make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, so, just to confirm, if you are voting yes on this ordinance, you are approving the, the proposed, the proposed rezoning. And a no is to, to be against it. Okay, everybody understand?
Yep.
See the votes? So, unanimous from all those that are present and able to vote to disapprove the ordinance requesting the rezoning. Thank you for your input. And I hope you have success in your, in your business.